Calling a meeting to order at 7:01. First on the agenda, we're gonna have elections, temporary elections, and so we got a forum and can have permanent positions. So, anybody have a nomination?
For the, for the chair?
For the chair.
Who's the one to do the chair first?
Yeah.
I'll nominate Mark for chair.
Okay.
So I think in a three-person, in, on a three-person board, we don't have to second or we just vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna vote or you do wanna do vice chair?
Um, then I'll, I'll, I can, I can vote for myself, so I will, I'll, I'll vote with Kevin to be to service the chair pro tempore, just for, just this meeting.
Yeah.
You're gonna be for this jo, you're voting for Kevin to be pro tempore?
No, I'm voting for myself. I'm voting, we only have three people, so I'm voting for myself.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Stacy?
Um, oh, I don't need to vote.
Okay.
Right.
And Kevin, you voted because you nominated, correct?
I voted to the temporary chair.
Yes.
For Mark.
Okay. So, Mark then becomes the temporary chair.
Okay.
Congratulations. Do I, do you wanna do the vice chair or you want me to?
If you want to, um, I would nominate Kevin to be the vice chair.
Okay.
Pro tempore for just, for just this meeting.
Okay.
And I think, I, it.
I accept.
Okay.
So.
Done.
With correspondence, not that this matters because we just voted, but in correspondence between the group, you said you didn't wanna be a chairperson. So what's changed?
A chairperson?
You said you didn't wanna be a chairperson.
I don't recall that. Um, is there?
I think, I mean, you're, you're starting pro tempore for just this meeting for a vice chair. And then, um, after this meeting, we will email each other if we need to do some correspondence and we have no, we have no, uh, you know, we're not distinguished as anything from there until hopefully, realistically, next, next meeting, we could have a full board and then we will permanently elect a chair and vice chair.
Does that make sense to you?
Well, it makes, and I don't wanna get into a confrontation here, but I have an email from you specifically stating you did not wanna be a chairperson. So.
You have an email from me saying I didn't wanna be a chairperson?
I do, Kevin. And you know that?
I think, I think, I think early on, we were, when both Kurt and Kathy resigned, we were sort of in a bind. So we emailed each other and said, would anybody be willing to step up and serve as chair or vice chair? But that is something that needs to be elected in the meeting, so.
Let me turn that off.
So now, we're here in order to just be able to run business and to get through the agenda and we need a chair and we need a vice chair.
We really need to call this person.
In order to do that, so, um, this is as temporary as it gets for the next hour and fifty-five minutes.
So while we're, um, while we have this opportunity, I'd just like to clarify a few things and, and I'm a bit of a rookie as Mark is. I've been on the board since July. Mark's been on the board since September. And I think we need to, now that this has occurred, we've just appointed a temporary chair and vice chair. And we're interviewing potential candidates with hopefully getting a five-member board back. Um, but I think we should work really, really hard this year. It's a new year, it's a new dawn.
There's no sound, nobody's hearing any of this, so I think we can hold on.
The sound just came on.
Okay, is there any issues problems?
Sorry, zoom is, sounds legit, now we're started. So people might join back in, work again.
Well, is there a difference between chair and vice chair? Tell me that.
Is there a difference?
Yeah, what kinda difference? I mean, I said chair in the email. Do we wanna get?
You said chairperson.
Well, Kevin, have you had a change of heart? Are you willing to serve as a vice chair for this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
God forbid anything happens to me, you will be, in this meeting, you will be in charge, but I'm hopeful that we can carry this over the finish line.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have carried it over the finish line and I think we need to, as I was starting, we need to, with everyone, the select board, the audience, anyone who's interested, we need to have transparency. And you were very explicit and you didn't wanna communicate in any other way, but via conversation on the telephone, which doesn't include everyone. And now this change of heart after your statement a few weeks ago, it, it, it's bewildering. And it's, it kinda makes me think that something else is going on behind the scenes with conversations, that you're not bringing everyone into the conversation. And it not only bewilders me, it makes me very nervous about transparency issues with this committee.
All right.
Okay, so.
So then another thing, while I'm on my, my bandwagon here, Mark, you brought up in an email today, it said Bob Allen's post is up this year as Z A, so it makes sense to ask him whether he will seek reappointment and then your very next sentence was.
First of all, Stacy, we haven't, we haven't even elected a chair and vice chair. All of these sort of things.
We just did.
I, I don't, I.
We never voted on.
We, we had some sound, we had some sound. I think, I think we would like to just revisit this. And then let's stick to the agenda. Changes to the agenda. You're referencing an email that I think has something to do with maybe reports under zoning administrator. So let's stick to the agenda that we set and that was posted and we're happy to talk about it. And we have Bob Allen here to answer any questions.
So I guess my follow-up was we can have some, your, your sentence was we can have some general discussions about scheduling, but nothing should be voted on until we have a full five-person board.
When we.
So is that for everything? Just so we're clear, I just wanna make sure we're all clear. So we're not voting on anything other than the chair and vice chair until we have a five-person board?
The interim chair and vice.
We will not discuss anything until we can get to changes to the agenda. If somebody would like to make a motion to discuss changing the meeting time based on the scheduling of prospective uh, PC members, current PC members, our current zoning administrator, then we can do that. This was something that I brought up. We will go through the appropriate channels and make the changes to the agenda. Should we so be inclined to do that?
Sounds reasonable to me to follow the agenda.
No, I agree. I'm just clarifying some points because we're a little rudderless here until now and we've had a lot of change over the past couple of months. So I just wanna be focused and clear on how we're going forward. So those were my comments. So now I'm done with my comments for this section. We can move forward, I think.
Okay. So we have pro tempore elected, uh, myself, Mark Corbin as the chair, uh, and Kevin Kaya as the vice chair. Okay. Um, number two to the agenda, changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda that any member wants to make?
Are exit interviews going to be discussed at some point or should we wait on that issue?
Um, I did not, um, maybe that's something we could discuss in other business, um, but we wouldn't be able to conduct you those now.
Okay.
Um, continuing the work on the bylaws, I thought you were putting that off.
So, um, okay, I can, I, I would move that for tonight until we get a full board that we strike the number six. Uh, working on the bylaw modernization grant with Martha. Um, if we're realistically going to have two more, uh, members, um, we'll just be reinventing the wheel next month. And we do have about a year and a half to wrap this. I moved that we strike number six from tonight. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I agree.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Are there any other, are there any other changes to the agenda that someone would like to bring up? Um, number three, approve the minutes of December fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um, are there corrections to the minutes? I know I have a few, but.
Jane, did you fix the spelling of my name?
Oh, did I miss your name?
Again, yeah.
That was one.
Sorry.
Um, also, also I believe, I believe Rich was in the room. Were you in the room last meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So instead of on Zoom, Rich?
No.
Rich was on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Was, was in the room.
Cause I was on Zoom last meeting, so I couldn't really see who was.
Okay. And then the only other thing I have is the second to last section on the second page under accessory dwelling units, new language four point one. Um, it just says Stacy motions to strike number five, Mark seconded, two yes votes, two no votes. Um, uh, should it, I don't know whether it should indicate who said, who voted in what way for the record or?
I don't know. What do you think?
Not necessary?
Yeah, I think, I think we should state that because it was Kathy, no, Kevin, no.
Kathy, Kevin, no.
I mean, we do have the recording. I just, if it's, it was a, it was a deadlock, but I didn't know if it made any sort of.
Okay.
Yeah, if it made any sort of.
Can I just say something about taking the minutes? When we all, when we did all Zoom, I had the recording the next day to go over. Now the recording comes out days later and Calista needs the minutes as of twelve o'clock on Thursday. So I don't have as much turnaround time and I don't get to see the recordings, so just for, you know.
Thursday after our meeting?
Yeah. So now it's a day and a half.
Mm-hmm.
So just to let you know that, you know.
Is, yeah, so you're, this is a little more.
I can't look at the.
Okay, but well, we can, we can, we can make changes to the, to the, to the, to the minutes. Um. That's all I, that's all I have. Any problem? Stacy and Kevin?
Yeah, I think covered it.
Um, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting as corrected.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, number four, uh, reports, um, mail and email.
So the only mail, the only mail we received was another recap of the solar project, um, at the fire station. I don't know why they sent out another mailing because it seems like a repeat of the one they did before, but maybe you can answer to that.
The energy we're pouring through, okay.
It's an effort to increase communication between all boards, all committees.
But it's pretty much a mirror image of what was sent out to us in November that we discussed in December, correct?
I am not, I am not sure if it has an edit or, uh, an otherwise, uh, new item in there, so, uh, I can't answer that question.
When, when was this, when was this sent out?
You know, when was that sent out?
It was December twenty-sixth.
Okay, so, um.
Not on my radar.
I don't know if I'm on the mailing list, but I'm.
Well, this, this goes to the office, to Calista.
Okay.
Maybe she needs another copy. That's one of the items that may have been missed by the committee that she needs another copy. I'm not sure.
So maybe that would be just, yeah, I mean, I think maybe if she would make a few copies for the board members, that would be great. And maybe she could send an email to all of us that we have this. I wasn't aware.
So the only other comment about email is within the committee, I really do hope that we're able to start copying one another and, and making sure that not, we're not leaving one person out of any of the correspondence.
Mm-hmm.
And I think to create trust and transparency, which I'm gonna harp on transparency, um, we should. Bob and I, I don't know, maybe you have a comment on this. Do you mind getting copied on our correspondence until we write ourselves and have a five-member board and, or is that?
Aye. Well, personally, I have no problem, but I think that's up to the three of you, whether or not you wanna do that. And I have no preference either way unless it's something that directly affects me as zoning administrator. Uh, you guys do what you want. If you wanna copy me, copy me. If you don't, no harm done.
Uh, first of all, uh, thank everybody for being here. Um, and if you know of any open meeting laws that require that this be the general procedure and not affect open meeting laws, uh, please speak up. Because I feel in order for transparency, every citizen has to see these emails.
And if anyone were to ask, they would get a copy of any of the emails?
I'm, I can, I think I can just speak to whenever we have sent emails, it's sent them, we've sent them to everyone, uh, at various times. Not everybody responds, but everybody is receiving them and reading them or processing them in their own ways. And I think that that's as good of a job as we can do until we're actually here at the meeting. And, you know, in terms of transparency, this is, this is the essence of transparency. So I think that that's what we're trying to do.
So Mark, I don't wanna call you out. I know Kevin is not crazy about email. Um, but like the, the rule, the performance standards that Martha sent you, I was not copied on that email. So where before I was copied on the emails from Martha to Kathy to the whole group. And since Kathy's resignation, I was not copied on that email.
Okay, maybe that's an oversight. I.
And I just wanna make sure, just because everyone's here and I want clarity and I want transparency, we all need to keep everyone in the loop.
I, there's nothing wrong with that. It, I mean, transparency is, is a, is a great buzzword, but I, I think, um, uh, in, in looking at the performance. So you don't have, you don't have any of these?
You forwarded it to me.
I, I forwarded it to because Martha sent it to me for whatever reason. I don't know why, but I did my, as opposed to giving it to you at the meeting.
Not confronting it, I'm just using this as an example. Transparency is a buzzword.
So Calista sends you things that are exclusively for your site initially. This is the first time I'm seeing it. I'm not sure when you got it, but.
It was on the piano tonight. Calista emailed me saying there was mail for the committee on the piano.
Okay.
I got here, opened up the meeting, I opened it.
Okay.
So I'm not sure where this is going, Mark. This is, this is not constructive at all.
I'm sorry you feel that way. Uh, we'll do our best to, uh, live up to that approximation. Um, um, is there any other email, uh, mail or email discussion? The only thing that I have is a number, a number of, the, the folks in the room have sent us email in terms of your interest in the, uh, in joining the commission, so, um, we'll get to the interview part pretty soon. I'm sorry?
I read those.
Yes, they're, they're, they're very impressive and very, uh, encouraging. Um, the regional planning commission, um, uh, as you know, Kathy is the representative. Kathy Rondo is representative to Mark, um, and she is, and she is vice chair of the executive council there. And, uh, I was just in touch with, um, Jason Rasmussen and she would like to continue. That's ultimately going to be up to the select board because they make that appointment. But, uh, she is involved in some large projects right now and she would like to continue. Um, and the only email that I have from her, she said, hi, Mark, there was no Mark meeting in December. The only news is that the sale of the building went through. We no longer own the property in Ascutney, but we will continue to rent there. Also, there will probably be postings for additional office support forthcoming. And signed Kathy. So that's the only information I have about the regional planning commission. I imagine at some point at the select board meeting, we'll hear at, at what time, um, those appointments are made.
March.
March. And, and, uh, and Robert, is that generally, it's generally that somebody that's on the planning commission serves on it or not necessarily?
I think it was, in Kathy's case, I think it was a volunteer sort of thing. She said, I'd be glad to do that for, and it may have come from the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, you would have to ask Mark if they feel it should be someone from the planning commission or not. I don't think the select board has an opinion.
Okay.
Either way.
Okay. Jason sounds like he's, he's very happy with her in, in that capacity and, um, it sounds like at times, as if right now, it's a, it's a fairly large time commitment, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, I do believe that the planning commission recommends to the regional planning commission, the representative to Mark.
Well, we, we do.
Right.
Yeah, sorry. I don't, I don't think there was anything that ever specifically titled the planning commission. Just happened that she was willing to do it. And it still is, I guess, like Mark's comment.
Okay.
Who's there? Did I cut you off? Did I cut you off, Bob?
I didn't hear you.
I thi, did I cut you off?
No.
Okay, sorry. Um, uh, Kevin, energy board?
Uh, I have a very short report. Um, we did do a, or we will be completing a weatherization project. The solar field is moving on as anybody can see. No, I don't have much of a report for you to write down. I need to put more energy into that.
You've, you've been very busy. You've been very busy with that. Um, zoning administrator, Robert?
I don't, I don't really have much to report. It's become very quiet since, uh, uh, the late summer, early fall. There was a permit that went through that was simply a, just went through last week. There was simply a relocation of a lean-to because it was interfering. You guys must have seen the Act two fifty.
Yes.
It was interfering with the setback from the wildlife, uh, area. Uh, he put in a new permit, has taken the old, uh, lean-to down and there are various pieces of it over near where he's gonna build it. I was up there just last week. So I signed it and he can reestablish it in that location. But that's been pretty much it, other than the river corridor, uh, issues with the people down at the lower end of the village and one person up in South Reading. That is something that you folks and myself need to address when you get into the zoning regulations and updates. People in the river corridor where they have damage in their house, water comes in, fills the basement, breaks the furnace, water pump, whatever. They are not, the last thing they're gonna be thinking of is that they need to apply for a permit to fix that stuff. That's the last thing. So we need to, we need to figure out something different. I'm not suggesting we do anything different in the flood plain. I'm not suggesting we do anything in the, in the waterway. But the river corridor is so widespread and changeable that those people that live in that corridor, uh, or have homes in that corridor, um, they're just not going to think about applying for a permit, especially when it has to go through me, through John Roper Campbell, back to you folks, schedule a hearing. It's weeks and they wanna get done and things fixed in days.
So we're, I mean, for, for my own clarity, we're asking people to get a permit to update their basement if they were flooded?
Well, but yes, they're, they're being asked to do a permit, Stacy, but it's more of a, uh, the way I have treated it, frankly, when they haven't done anything to the exterior of the house or the property. In other words, they're not trying to build another room or another garage or shed or anything that's gonna impede the water. The way I have treated it is it's more of information, this is what happened to my property, this is what I did to fix it and this is how much it cost me. And basically John Roper Campbell seems to be pretty good with that. And all of that happened in the cases down here well after the fact of their doing it. Which, if it was my home, it'd be the same way. The next morning I'd be pumping out my basement, pulling the furnace and doing all of that kinda stuff.
Absolutely.
There's no permit required for, for that. There's no permit required for flood mitigation in your home.
River corridor regulations.
I think, I think Kevin, it, there's an overlay with the river corridor.
Well, there is when you start thinking about, okay, how.
But I mean, probably within the state's input, there, I mean, a, a lot of people are, you know, are, are, are doing these things and then asking for forgiveness later. So how, how is the state helping you as the zoning administrator navigate in terms of? I mean, there are, there are varying degrees of, you know, somebody doing something in their basement to get their house up and livable. And then some that might be changing the very, very waterways and, 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 and what happens with runoff. I mean, there are, there are tears.
That's basically why I'm sending everything to John Roper Campbell that I get, for his comments.
And the state does have a, an allowance of time for people under an emergency act like we experienced in July.
Exactly.
To do what they need to do without any sort of oversight.
Yeah, that, everybody's been very, very forthcoming that I've gone to see Jackie and Josh and Becky Carbonell and the lady across the street, Erin Franklin. They've all said, okay, and they've done it. And they're all down in John Roper Campbell's hands, so I'm gonna be interested. I can answer your question better, Mark, after I see how he answers the permits that they sent down.
He hasn't answered any of those yet?
The only one he answered was the halls.
And how, what was that answer? Cause I didn't, I don't.
Uh, you guys have the.
I, I had it and that's in point to be in the Z B A report. I was just going to read what John Roper Campbell said.
It's, it's basically, he's suggesting a variance and then.
A conditional use permit for the.
Yeah.
A conditional use permit for the burns and a variance for the flood wall.
Yeah.
And he sent this to you?
This was, this, this was sent to, this was sent to all of you. This was sent, I, 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 I don't think I, right now I can send you.
So this is, this is a wild break.
Well, it was December seventh, so it was after our last meeting, so this is the first time we're publicly.
I thought there was a follow-up to that.
Publicly discussing it.
Yeah. So there hasn't been a follow-up to that December seventh?
Hasn't been one.
A follow-up to that December seventh?
No, it, it's basically in your hands over here.
Okay.
It's. Anything else, Bob, for your report?
No, not really. It's been really quiet for the past month and a half as far as new zoning permits. I've been working on those river corridor stuff and general flood stuff, but not permits.
So what kind of work do you do on the river corridor management? And perhaps Marie Lebec Kaduto is involved in that?
Who's involved?
Uh, I think Marie Kaduto wrote the.
The only, the only thing I've been working on in the river corridor, Kevin, is getting these permits. It was asked for by the state, uh, filled out and back to John Roper Campbell.
Okay. So it's just a permitting issue, not a planning issue? Okay.
The only other thing I would ask, um, just, uh, Bob, um, you're up for reappointment this year as zoning administrator. Will you seek that role again?
That's up to you folks. I mean, basically you can either recommend me or not. We don't, the, the alternate is older than I am, so I'm not sure he's gonna want to pick it up. But basically it's up to whether you, it's up to the planning commission to make a recommendation.
I mean, I know, I know that a lot of other communities are using, using, uh, zoning administrators through, um, Mark. And, um, I didn't know if that's something that might take some of the burden off of the town and you.
I haven't discussed it with Mark to see if they wanna pick up any of that responsibility.
Okay.
Uh, I, I know some of the towns are doing it for lack of.
Knowledge.
Anybody stepping up to do a job, so they stepped in and they did some work in Weathersfield. They're doing some work in Windsor right now, I believe.
I'm just wondering with all of it, yeah.
They assist me a lot if I've got a question, but as far as doing it, I, I still do it.
But with all the new complexities and state regulations, it's not, it's not so different and overwhelming than it used to be?
Not, it's not in writing, no.
Okay. The last, the ZBA report, I sent out to all of the members, the response, which we've already discussed a little bit, from John Brokaw Campbell, the environment department of the Environmental Conservation, just essentially, I mean, I think realistically, if we can get a functioning full board come next February, probably the next item of business would be to schedule a conditional use hearing and a variance hearing for the, all our foundation. The earliest is realistically probably March. Because per, per, per zoning, the berms, I mean, we've already read this, it's what, what John's interpretation is. We need to look, look at our, what our zoning says and make an appropriate decision.
What does our zoning say about berms?
Berms are, berms are not allowed. The interpretation in terms of the berms right now is that this is regrading of existing material. I thought that there seemed to be a lot of other material that came from maybe upstream, downstream, somewhere else. It's, it's, it's difficult to, it was done so quickly and without, without any sort of permit. So it's sort of hard to piece the history pieces together. But, but per the guidelines in, in what I sent you, as soon as I received this last month, a conditional use permit needs to be granted for the berms and a variance for the flood wall, that concrete flood wall in front of the welcome center.
No question. Did Army Corps of Engineers personnel come out here?
I understand they did. Not me, Kevin, but I understand that they were here. Scott Jensen was here, John Brokaw Campbell was here, Mark was here. Almost everybody has been here that would have any input to that.
Okay.
That's all I have right now.
Sounds good. I move, we accept the ZBA report.
Okay.
We have to, we have to vote on that? Okay.
I approve. Okay. Number five, the interviews, prospective PCs, EBA candidates. I'm going to let others chime in. We just had sort of, we'd like to do this sort of publicly and have sort of more of a conversation. So we have some really great, really encouraging, some great talent in this room and on Zoom with Erin. So I would suggest that we, in some sort of orderly way, maybe we can start with the folks in the room and then move to Erin on Zoom. Just say a little bit about your, your background so we can get to know you a little better and your interest in the position. And then we've all prepared sort of some different questions that we would ask of you, and then certainly there's opportunity for you to ask questions of us. So. Eve, would you like to start?
Sure.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, that'd be helpful.
My last name's Waterfall, so I usually go at the end of any alphabetical order. We have owned a home in Reading since about 2007 and have been, you know, kind of hanging out in the, in the background there, up on Town Hill Road at the end of the road. But we are new empty nesters. We have two kids in college. One is out west, one is at UVM. And we have become more interested in village life and town of Reading life as we've had more time to pay attention and, and look around. So when these openings came up and they weren't immediately filled, I felt, I felt called to step forward and offer my background, which is my background is I'm an attorney. I practiced for a long time in a law firm environment, including real estate, both residential and commercial, and general corporate and business law. I have been retired as an attorney for a number of years because I was at home raising the kids, but I sat on a number of not-for-profit boards, including in Boston, I've been on a committee for about 15 years that is zoning and licensing committee for Beacon Hill, which is an historic district. And I also sit on their architectural committee, which makes recommendations to the zoning board in Boston and the Architecture Commission in Boston for variances, proper use, proper architecture, development of an historic district. So I have a lot of experience in this area. What I do, I'm not a litigator. I'm, I'm basically business and contracts. And what I have done in my career and in my not-for-profit work, which includes sitting on the board of a museum, sitting on the board of the Civic Association in Boston, sitting on the board of the Green Mountain Valley School in Waitsfield, Vermont, and I'm forgetting another one, the Nature Conservancy of Massachusetts. What I have done is look at rules, look at regulations, prepare bylaws, review bylaws, update bylaws. So this is what I do and have done for many years, both in a paid capacity and unfortunately, for a lot of years, non-paid capacity. But I, I think that I have a lot to offer with this process and feel like it is my turn to step up and offer something back to the beautiful town of Reading where we have really enjoyed becoming more and more part of this community. And happy to entertain. Any questions?
Thank you.
So you've lived here since 2007. You're not a resident of Vermont.
We are not residents. We're back and forth still to Massachusetts for various business reasons. You know, the time will probably come. It's not this second, but we are still mass residents. But we have, where kids are in college, we can come and go as we please, never again on a Friday night. So we are here a lot more and, and a lot more involved in the town. And I think anybody who knows us knows that we have participated in all sorts of things, from cleanup days to food pantry support, to handing out meals from the National Guard on Hurricane Irene, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we've, we've been, I think, pretty involved to the extent that we can be.
And it's not an issue because the state guidelines allow us to have a board with majority residents. So we could have theoretically a three-member resident board with a two-member non-resident board, Mark being one of them.
That's my understanding as well.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Eve, I have a question, because I know a little bit of, of the Beacon Hill Civic Association. I see that you're on the governance committee, and one thing that seems to be hitting all sorts of boards all over the place are conflicts of interest. And that's something that, that's, that's like your specialty within one of them, within the organization. What the, what have you come across around that? And just wondering whether or not there would be any sort of applications in any of the work that we're doing? And how is the best way to kind of stay in front of that and stay open about it?
Yeah, sure. You know, I think I, I've looked at the planning bylaws, and it spells out pretty carefully what the conflict of interest are. So the way I operate as an attorney is I go to the rules, go to the regs, go to the law. I read that and try to follow the rule of law. I am chair of the governance committee of the Beacon Hill Civic Association. I'm also chair of the governance committee at the Green Mountain Valley School up in Waitsfield. So I, I have dealt with this a lot. I think whenever you have a, well, depends on your organization. I would look at what it says, but whenever you have a personal interest in something and how something turns out, financial or otherwise, or sometimes it's even just an appearance of a personal interest, you probably should step away and recuse yourself. But it depends on the rules governing your organization. So that would be the place to start.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have?
Anything else?
I think this is for the board to ask. The public comment comes later, or just the?
I was just saying, ask if we're allowed to speak or not speak.
What, what's the deal?
Why don't we, why, I, I think, I think it would be reasonable to, I mean, I, we've each prepared some questions. Why don't, after we've asked the questions, why don't we ask the public to, to participate? I think that seems, that'll keep the flow going.
Are you aware of a village center designation in Vermont?
Am I aware of it?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that's a thing. I, I would have to look into it deeply if you have any substantive questions.
I don't have a substantive question, but I, I want people.
It's an opportunity here. Is that why you're getting ahead, or?
No, we all have designated, thanks to former member Becky Bash and myself. Reading Village here, Felchville, is a designated village center, which opens up a number of business opportunities.
Yeah. I mean, if, if there are opportunities to be had and there's money to be had, it would behoove us to figure out what those are and move on it. And one of the things that I do well through my training and through my, my career as an attorney and then later for all these not-profit boards, is I am pretty good at coming up to speed fairly quickly, based on whatever the rules are and the background governing it. So I'm a good reader, I'm a good note taker, I'm a pretty good synthesizer and analyzer of all these regs. And if, if there's something that we're interested in, that's something I feel pretty confident, coming up speed on fairly quickly.
Thank you.
Just one, one question I had, just to, so that we know how to do the flow, whether we'll just ask all the questions of Eve. There's some questions that I want to ask to everybody, just a very kind of overarching. I was just wondering, is there anything else in what Eve has said? That, are there some specific questions in terms of her application or what she spoke to?
So for structure, I think, and it's, it's very wise, if we get the presentations from each of the candidates, and then if there's specific questions, which we've done for, like with Eve, then we can ask a broad question that each candidate can answer. Because my, my questions aren't really specifically for you, Eve, they're sort of for everyone.
So, yeah, why don't we do that? Because I had some specific questions for each candidate, and then we can ask the, the general questions. Are there any other specific questions for Eve, based on what she spoke to? All right, can't see Eve.
Thank you.
Sarah, are you?
I am not.
You are not. Okay. One task. Holly Morse, you've, you're.
I wasn't prepared for the presentation, but hi, everybody. Some of you know me. I've been living in Reading for about 40 years. My children both went to school, to the Reading School. I've, I've served as the health officer in town back in the 80s, so I have a little bit of background in land use planning. And my first degree is in environmental sciences. So I have kind of used that in my second part of life where I was a teacher and a principal. And I taught high school science for a while, as well as special ed and elementary school. So I've been in the education system for the past 38 years or so. I just retired. I'm now doing Grammy daycare. I have my grandchildren that need my help before they enter the school system themselves. They're two and three right now. So I have been very busy with them. But I have a strong interest, I, I have a, a large property up on Tattle Street, about 80 acres. I try to manage with my family. But I've had a strong interest in the Act 250 and how the laws have changed and tried to stay up to date on some of that. I, it is going to be a little bit of learning curve to get caught up on some of the legalities of the changes that have happened in the last 10 years or so, because I haven't been, you know, keeping up to date with everything. But I do pay attention to that part. But I offered my services because I saw that there, that you were looking for a warm body, but I, but if you have somebody else, I'm happy to, to, to let somebody else step in. But over the years, I've, you know, just done different pieces. Like I said, health officer, I was on the, the planning board for building the new school in the, in the 90s and then served as principal here in town for about five years in 2000. So I've just been around. Do you have some questions?
Is there any specific questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much for all your service. Let's see. And then Erin.
What about Jane?
Hey, everybody.
Oh, well, I guess Jane is in the room. Okay. We'll go with Jane. My bad.
Hi, my name is Jane March, as probably all know. I moved here like about three years ago, and actually Eve was the first person I met, and then met everybody else who was wonderful on my road. So I'm not new to Vermont. My husband and I had owned a ski house in Plymouth for like 25 years. I'm from New York where my background is I was a teacher and a college professor. And then when I retired, I opened two businesses, two hot yoga studios. So my background is in business and education. We moved here, we decided we wanted to get out of New York and move to Vermont because we always loved it. We found Reading, which I always knew about, but never really saw, and we just really lucked out finding the most beautiful house. So as soon as we moved here, my whole desire was to give back to the community. I did that. In New York, I served on a community board and a environmental conservation board because I, we lived on a lake. So I've been involved in environmental conservation for a long time. Part of why we moved to New York was so that we could be in a really democratic place where our voice really made a difference. So when the job of the secretary came up, I decided to take it. I was very happy to have it. I didn't care that I got paid, even though I do. And so I've been to, for the past two years, to every planning commission meeting. I have a good understanding how the planning commission runs and what's expected of the members of it. And I try to go to all the select board meetings just because I'm really interested in what's going on in the town. A few of our neighbors have gotten together and have been thinking about what about, we've been thinking about Felchville. What can happen with Felchville? We, my husband and I attended a seminar in Stratford about, it was entitled, "The Future is Rural." And it was about revitalizing towns like Felchville that are kind of fallen on by the wayside and need like an input of business and economic growth. So I'm very interested in that. And that's basically it. I've just, it's my desire to help out, to be part of the community.
Does anyone have any specific questions for Jane?
Since you brought it up, Jane, do you think that to gain more residents and tackle some of the obstacles, and this will be a question for everyone, every candidate, that we need more restrictions and more ordinances?
No, not necessarily. We maybe need guidelines, maybe we need restrictions. I mean, that's a question I can't answer you right now until I know what we're talking about. My focus is that all residents be treated fairly, that things don't encumber, you know, don't hurt someone else, and that we just help each other out. Community is my goal.
The only other question I had is, when you write, you want to contribute to the PC in a constructive way by listening and being able to balance private rights and interests with the public good. Can you give me an example of just what that might look like? Where you, where you do need to thread that balance between private interests and?
So the, the ideas of STRs, I know there's so much conversation on the board about STR, short-term rentals. I am not opposed to short-term rentals at all. I just think that there needs to be some kind of guideline or balance there that, because, okay, I'll give you the reason why I feel this way. My sister. My sister, who has been in a ski club for like fifty years, rented someplace over at Okemo on the mountain. And there were sixteen people in one condo and there are hundreds and hundreds of condos over there. And nobody who owns the condo lives there, so they can't like, you know. So that's like, kind of like an extreme thing, but it made me understand that there just needs to be something to keep it fair for everybody, that there needs to be guidelines, you know. I understand the whole process of, um, if you can't enforce something, you can't, don't have it, you know, it's no sense to have it. So I'm just trying to keep an open mind about things and really listen to what everybody wants.
So do you, forget STRs, do you believe that all ordinances, all guidelines that exist in Okemo, Killington, Weathersfield should apply to Reading?
No, of course not.
Any other questions for Jane?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. When's the last time you've done a needs assessment for what Reading is looking at? For like, let's say the next five years or so, what prioritize projects are?
Kevin, I think you can speak to that.
Yeah, there was one in, uh, two thousand and three, I think there was one in two thousand and seventeen, if I'm not mistaken. And it was, uh, um, maybe a fifty percent return. When the internet came on, we got a better return. So things like rural life, wildlife, recreation. I mean, there's like six different types of recreation and recreation trails. That was a high priority. Yeah. I think Jane hit it on the nose when she said, uh, love your neighbor and tell the truth, so.
Does that drive some of the decisions that the board is working on as far as their priorities and their goals?
That's how they came up with the, uh, management plans, the town plan, and hopefully this only ordinances. I think we, we tried to include most people in engaging them in, uh, the process.
And this was what date, Kevin? Two thousand and three?
I could get those dates for you, but I think the, the, the last one was probably more than seven or more years ago to be a, a survey. It was a townwide survey. I may recall those. I was trying to think while you were talking, Kevin, I, I don't recall exactly my list.
Yeah. And I don't remember seeing a survey and I've been here my whole adult life, which is in excess of thirty-five years, so.
It was a town.
No, it was a survey in the last few years.
Twenty-twenty readapt of twenty-fifteen, town base, town plan survey of twenty-nineteen.
Oh, it's twenty-nineteen, twenty-eight.
The survey was like, oh, I just.
Yeah, they were talking about cafes and revitalization of the town.
I'm curious about that one.
Yes, yes, that's.
That's two years off, yeah?
No, no, more than two.
That's not, that's not.
Not that long.
Oh, time.
And that's one of the questions I think we'll discuss of all candidates, just in terms of some of your visions and hopes for, for, for Reading. And, uh, you know, I'm looking at the, the, the town, um, plan and the survey results.
Okay. Corrected, I was saying corrected.
Were you directing me to Erin? Erin?
I'm just saying, we still have another candidate.
Yes, I know, all right. So Erin, uh, thanks for joining us on Zoom.
Yes, thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry for not being there in person. I live on Grasshopper Lane and getting to the pavement can be a little treacherous these days. So, uh, in fact, that is a large part of my interest in the planning work is thinking proactively about the future of Reading and how we address and respond to what seems to be the new normal of, um, mud all year and, and climate change really wreaking havoc. So I come to this opportunity with a background as a researcher, but not in this field. I have about two decades of, of research and evaluation experience in public education. So I have worked very closely with state departments of education, school districts of all sizes, uh, nonprofit organizations on program planning, program implementation, program evaluation and impact analysis. So I would bring those analytical skills to this work. Um, I also currently serve on several nonprofit boards, um, locally on the GMHA board, Green Mountain Horses Association. Uh, in Massachusetts, I'm part of the Mass Insight Education and Research Board, a scientific advisory board member for Horses and Humans Research Foundation. So those are just a few of my, my board experiences. I think in terms of, I, I guess you, you got started to ask some questions about, about why people are here, but I do think, you know, identifying opportunities in the village core as well as preserving and continuing to invest in the amazing resources we have sort of on this side of town in terms of our, our unbeatable trail network that's literally the envy of, of people around the country. And, um, making sure that we continue to have the goodwill of, of local landowners, allowing the events that this town is known for to continue to happen, um, is an interest of mine. I've certainly personally benefited from it and can't tell you the number of people that, that thank organizations like GMHA for bringing them to this town and, um, and by extension, the landowners who allow people to access their private properties as they, they move through both public and private land. I'm so happy to answer any questions, but yeah, that's, that's what brought me here tonight.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Erin? Erin, there was just, um, in the first, uh, in the first sentence, you mentioned proactive planning. It's, it's, it's very, it's, it's a powerful, powerful idea. Like, what, what does that mean to you and, and what applications would that be for here in, here in town?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we've learned anything from this, this past year, it's that nature is going to happen to us whether we're ready for it or not. And the way that, you know, we've, it, it feels as a resident and somebody who has been directly impacted by flooding and, and the conditions of our town infrastructure that, um, we've sort of sat back and, and let things happen to us and we weren't really prepared for what, what hit us this year. And to be honest, I don't know what we're doing to prevent, prevent that in the future. And I have a real interest in, um, not just waiting for this to happen again, but for working with the town, the existing town organizations to, to try to get out ahead of that. So making decisions about, um, you know, when, when people are, are thinking about future planning for their properties, what are sustainability goals as a community? When the town is making decisions about town property, what are our goals for sustainability as a town? And how are we building that into decision-making? So I, I guess I would just say we, we can't wait for this to happen again and we need to use the structure we have in place to be ready for when it does happen again so that the effects are not as devastating to individuals and to the town as they have been this year.
And how do, how do you, Erin, how do you feel the town, or the planning commission can move that along?
Yeah, I mean, I, I will be honest, I have, I have not studied the cases that have, have come in front of the commission this year and that relate to flood damage. So that's a question that I have and a learning that I would have, uh, to, to understand better how this particular commission is involved in those decisions. Uh, I think you all were sort of alluding to potentially one decision that's in front of your current commission about, um, some changes being made in Felchville that are in response to the flood and will have an impact on the, the rest of Felchville in the future, um, if there is another flood event. So that seems like a concrete example. When we look over closer to this side of town, I know there's a lot of discussion about a, a potentially large parcel of land that borders our farm, um, becoming part of, of state land. So I, I know the commission is somewhat involved in that, that whole, um, sale. And, you know, I think there are opportunities to think about how, when, when people do sell land out of private ownership into state ownership, you know, how are we making sure that the town is still engaged in, um, in that, the health and wellbeing of, of that land and also involved in how people are using that land if that possible. Again, I, I am still learning about exactly what the commission does, but when I think about land use generally, environmental impacts are going to have a, have a direct impact on how people are able to use and engage with land in this town. And so I, I hope that those things are being discussed and considered as, as the commission is making decisions about requests that people are coming forward to present.
So speaking of that specific sale back to the state, if it, if and when it happens, do you feel the state is doing everything they can to be proactive with all of these climate issues and, and drastic storm events?
I mean, I, I personally have not experienced any kind of proactive outreach from anyone at the, the state county or town level as a resident who's been affected. Um, I feel like, I don't think that communication about future plans is a strength right now. And I, I think that again is a motivation for me to want to be involved in this type of work and that, um, I, you know, I, I don't know what the state's plans are frankly for that piece of land and have reached out to members of this commission to try to find out more, have reached out to the town to try to find out more. And it doesn't sound like anybody really knows what the plans are. So I think that's just an example of how proactive communication could go a long way and just helping people understand what the goals are and what may happen in the future. So I think to answer your question directly, no, I, I don't think that there, there is a lot that the average person knows about how the state, the county or the town is thinking about sustainability at the face of few threats like this.
And how do you feel that this commission can help that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think just understanding what role the commission even plays in these kinds of decisions is, is a first step in educating people who live in this town and could be affected without even knowing it. Um, and I think, again, as this commission, commission is making decisions about people's requests to make changes, you know, I think there's just an education component that would be useful for other people in the town to understand. First of all, what is our, what are our sustainability goals as a town? How does the commission's work feed into those goals? And, and then how are decisions made in light of those goals?
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other specific questions for Erin?
Yeah, going, going back to, uh, land management issues, do you think, uh, this planning commission could, with other towns and regional planning commissions, uh, come up with a regional plan? Of course, Ascutney Outdoors over here, Okemo Mountain Resort over there, uh, corridor, travel through South Reading. Is there any way that drone technology could inventory what we're doing? Where things like beaver habitat are, which are mitigating types of, uh, wildlife areas? Is that something that you would be interested in, uh, pursuing in terms of how to get a good long-term plan for land management?
Yeah, I mean, I think using the. Sure, yeah, uh, there, you know, I think using existing technology is a great first step. I mean, there are also many apps that don't involve having a drone pilot out there. But I think, uh, you know, when, when you talk to trail users or if you are an active trail user yourself, I think people have gotten fairly savvy about using the, the technology that exists now to understand where are the corridors that are open. Uh, you know, we have so many amazing clubs in this area, whether they're the snowmobilers or the ATVs or the bikers or the horse folks. You know, they've got a pulse on the current state of what's out there in the trails and I think they are carrying a lot of, um, a lot of that work through the clubs, who seem to coordinate and communicate pretty well, I think. So that's a real asset for this area and that we think of our, our recreation and our land use, um, more collectively across towns than I think a lot of other regions and areas might. So I, I think that's an asset to build on for sure.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. That's sort of enlightening, enlightening.
Erin, that was a really tough question. I never would have been able to answer that, so, so good job. I have a, I have a few questions and I think maybe just, maybe just organically, uh, I'll ask the question and then we can just see who wants to answer it. I don't want to think that these are trick questions, but, um, I think it gives us a little insight into how you think and perhaps how you're, you know, engaging with the current, with the current planning commission. So maybe I can ask the first question and then other folks can step in. Are there any sections of the zoning ordinance that you would like to see changed or removed? That we, that we have? If you, if you had the time to engage in any of the, in any of the ordinance, it's, it's, uh, it's dense.
Um, I'll start. No, there are none that I am itching to see changed or removed. I would like to see, uh, I haven't been online for every meeting talking about changing the zoning ordinance, but I would like to see the suggested revisions so far and compare them to the original and think through how those make sense and where that process is going. I think that revision will be extremely important, both to, uh, protect people and their rights and their property and also to do some of this proactive planning. But in terms of looking at the zone codes as they stand now, no. Uh, I think they're fairly usable documents that, um, do a nice job balancing the rights and needs of the community and the neighbors and the butters and the town.
I know, um, as you get farther out, heading up towards condition, heading up, um, by the town lines, the sizes of the lots are about ten acres. And, um, and if, if one of the goals of the town is to bring in a little bit more development or allow, um, somebody to build on a five-acre lot, we might need to look at the zoning in the future depending on what the goals of the towns are. So I think that's why I asked the question, when was the last time we did a needs assessment? Because everything needs to connect back to what our goals are and what we're trying to see develop in town. I really like what Erin said about the corridors and connecting maybe to the, the bike trail coming in from Ascutney and connecting to the horse trail over in South Woodstock. We haven't really put ourselves on the map as part of a link to some of those trails. So if that's one of the goals in town, to, to gain some identity for Reading, then we do have to look at everything, including the zoning. Um, at the last meeting, the two of you were discussing like HOA, Home Auto Association type of.
Or just small lots, small lots and smaller lots for, for more affordable housing.
We were really tackling, to be, to be clear, we were really tackling affordable housing, the conversation of affordable housing, which is, you know, a catastrophe.
Well, I'm in the town, um, my, I have an eighty-acre lot on Tattle Street and my zoning was, if I wanted to break it off, about five acres. And then it changed to ten on the, along the road and then twenty-five up on my back lot. And I just remember it happening very quickly without any heads up that it was coming. So I just think that maybe we're at a place now with some of the issues that the state is having on affordable housing to relook at some of the zoning.
Here, here.
And I, I think this is a great opportunity, you know, communication is key. And one of my questions to all of you is, how do we bridge, you know, there's, there's division in our community, whether we want to admit it or not. And there've been, I've been going to these meetings religiously for two years now and there's been a lot of blame placed on certain people, certain individuals, certain committees, the select board. And I feel it's unjust because we're not coming up with a clear plan on how to communicate and bridge these entities together. So that's one of my questions to all of you is how do we do, how would you suggest we do that?
Well, we have to be careful. We have a town plan and I think it's a quite good town plan. So the question was, do I have anything I want to see changed? Me personally, do I want to advance my own agenda? No. And I don't think anyone should advance their own agenda. It should be representing the interests of the town, which should be informed by things like the survey and the town plan. So that's, I think, something that a little town like Reading really needs to be careful of is that everyone who's in any kind of position of influence needs to be working for the good of the town, not the good of themselves. Or, you know, we have a hundred and something acres, a hundred and five, a hundred and six acres. It's not about my concerns about what's going to happen on my corner of the hill. It's about the entire town. And there are some pretty good wildlife corridors. You're right about when changes come along that affect individual landowners or the town generally, making sure that those are publicized and, and embraced, not sort of.
I was just using that as an example.
It's a great example.
But communication is key and, um, and, and basically my point is we need goals and clear proactive planning and knowing what direction we want to go and everything kind of has to look at, be looked at to be, to fit those, those goals. knowing what direction we want to go and everything kind of has to look at, be looked at to be to fit those those goals.
I think on the communications front, we have a a lot of work to do in terms of just making information accessible. Um, you know, when I was thinking about coming to this meeting, just trying to find any information on the website about to the question asked previously, what is what is the current code? What are the current regulations? Uh, it's not easy to find on the website and there are a lot of PDF documents that are uploaded with no description of what they are or how to use them. Um, so I I think that other towns, when I look around, whether it's through Facebook or Front Porch Forum or town websites, um, are communicating much more frequently and much more clearly about happenings in the town. Um, and so it feels like there are some very easy steps that could be taken. Again, to use the word proactive, uh to not have people have to come and ask for basic information, but to have that information readily available on a regular basis, a predictable schedule. Uh, and to help people understand what all the committees do and how they do work together or um should work together.
From my perspective, I think we've been doing a much better job on on that level over the past several years.
Well, from my perspective, it hasn't been good because I use the website a lot to get information when I do the minutes and things are very difficult to find. Things are not updated. And there, she's right, there are no explanations. And I think one of the things we asked, that the planning commission asked the select board was to pay to upgrade the the website and maybe that's what has to be done.
The ongoing, from my recollection, go ahead, please. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I don't want to, I don't want to take up your time. I just want to say that there is some work going on behind the scenes on the website and there is some money appropriated through APRA to do some upgrades to it, but a completely new revision is probably not part of that, although maybe it can be made simpler and easier to use. I I don't know the answer to that because I'm not a technical
Well, so when I had my businesses, I did all the marketing, so I created the websites for them. It's not difficult. And I would even volunteer to help Callista, she needs the help to keep it managed and keep it upgraded and make sure all the information is, you know, up to date and everything.
I believe in the report. I mean, I I don't need to defend Callista, but I think Callista gives a report on on the updates as she's been making them and I I think it's improved. I I don't have any reason. Do you have specifics?
You're not on the planning commission yet on the website.
I'm what?
You're not on the planning commission yet on the website.
Your name.
Your name.
Oh, wow. But I am with VLCT, so there is a connect somewhere.
Does anyone else have any other que- questions or I have just sort of like the really large picture questions? Um, I would ask, what are the top one, two, three issues, you choose, um, that are that the ZBA PC might uh direct its energy towards?
I'm thinking the uh economic development in the town. Veltchville itself and the, well, I know the water situation is as it is and it's being worked on with the um Deboz and King with their surveys and everything.
You're speaking of the freshwater and the sewage.
And the sewage, which that really has to get upgraded or dealt with in some way before most things can happen. Um, but I I do know there's a, every time I speak to a new person, like yesterday I spoke to a new person and everybody's like, has these imaginings of what they could see the town look like, you know? That there could be a little coffee shop here and, you know, little store here and me, you know, whatever it is. Everybody has like this vision of how they want it to be. So I don't know if it's the purview of the planning commission to kind of support things like that.
Yes.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be my number one thing.
It is, and a follow-up question would be in order to attract those businesses, those people who want to invest in our community, do you believe that more ordinances and restrictions need to be put in place?
No, I don't necessarily unless I I don't know what the water situation is going to turn out to be. There may have to be restrictions if, depending on what happens in the town. So it it's all has to do with what's going to happen that do you need to put restrictions or do you need to have guidelines or can you just let it let it go?
Well, I think the most important thing is cost. For a small community like this, the cost of those projects, those municipal projects is huge.
When I went to that uh seminar, I spoke to Becca, Becca Balin's assistant and she said, there is a lot of money available. Um, I know Erin was saying on her resume that you've written a lot of grants. So, you know, things like that is, so I think it's there. It just, all this has to be activated in some way.
Yeah, I mean, if I could just jump in there, I I think exactly what it, what is the the goal for Reading? Who do we want to be as a community? Um, and that's a huge question with a huge answer. Uh, that there there's no one word answer to that, but I think the downtown certainly is a focus and I, you know, we're in a time right now where the state can't give away the money that's available. Um, and building the capacity in the town to pursue that, again, and to use the word in a proactive way and to think really creatively about how to make some of these projects fit into what exists now and what's likely to exist in the future feels really important. Um, and we have this amazing resource on the outskirts of town um that right now is disconnected from trail systems going to Ascutney or going to South Woodstock. Uh, and of course, that has not been the top priority in repairs coming back from the flood, but um you know, just in my world, I think looking at GMHA plans for next year, there's not really a feasible way to get people from South Woodstock over to this side of Reading right now because of the state of the trails. And so we don't want to be cut off from that system. Um, I don't want to be cut off from that system. And I I think a lot of people who live here don't want that to happen. Um, is that in the purview of the planning commission? I I will, I don't know. I I don't, I don't know well enough to know what role the planning commission might have there, but I think continuing to imagine how this commission can help make connections to other communities and not be an island feels really important to me, whether we're talking about downtown or outside of downtown. Um, so I I guess that would probably be on the top of my list is how do we really fully integrate ourselves into this broader community um in a way that builds on assets that already exist, but also brings, you know, a special flavor of this town to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions from the board before we open it to community members?
I'll answer that last question.
Oh, okay.
I think the role of zoning is really important, keeping balancing uh obviously development on the one hand and the rights and privileges of others on the other hand. And my top priority, I'm really interested in the revision to the zoning ordinance and how that can be done in a way that strikes an appropriate balance. Um, I'm not in favor of boatloads of regulation for regulation's sake, but appropriate regulations that enhance the town plan. Um, keeping the town plan as a guiding document, it's fairly recent. I think it was really well done and thoughtful. We followed that process. Those wildlife corridors, very thoughtful process. Um, I like the idea of connecting with other communities. The rules and regulations exist to make sure that within those development efforts, people's individual rights and liberties are also intact. So listening greatly to the opinions of the butters and interested persons in the development. But I would love to see Reading use its town plan as a guideline and use its zoning ordinance as a working document to figure out a way to liven up the town. You know, since since we have arrived in town in two thousand and seven, we've lost uh Old Homeday. We've lost Keepers, which we could actually walk to at the bottom of our hill. Um, we've lost the general store. Uh, you know, I don't know what I would do without the greenhouse. I love them. Um, so that's deeply concerning and figuring out a way that planning regulations can enhance the business environment without putting the people at risk who will be impacted. That's the balance. So that would be my goal.
And I think a comment to that is we've, for decades, we've had, we've been operating off of these these ordinances and the guidelines. We haven't really had but one real issue. Um, and that got blown out of, out of, just out of the water. Um, so I don't think, you know, to sort of comment on your your responses, I don't know if additional regulations and and ordinances are necessary when we haven't had any issues. And it's in the the friction that has been occurring over the past several years is scaring people away. And when they come to this board for a variance or whatever, they're they're getting scared away. They're getting put through a process that is telling me, yeah, I don't want to invest in Reading, I'm moving on.
Well, varies exist for a reason and they are there to be taken advantage of when appropriate, giving large deference to the people they will impact. So if it's a no harm, no foul, very unique circumstances without bad precedent that can be used to uh interfere with other people's properties in an unproductive way, maybe that's an appropriate variance. And my experience on Beacon Hill, the most regulated part of New England, as far as I can tell, uh except maybe, you know, downtown Kennebunk, I don't know. Uh, is that variances can be appropriate when people aren't being hurt and that's okay. But if they're setting that precedent that can be used elsewhere that that will be impactful in the community negatively, um, or they don't have very specific circumstances, or they're just not the right thing, then you don't give them. But but keeping an open mind and and, you know, using wiggle room when it's right, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, I I would agree. Um, you know, you cannot predict the future. Um, so if they are there for the protection of life, liberty and pursuit of happiness for the residents, then I'm fine with those.
I think um like the ordinance have been working, but what what a higher priority right now is we have lost our identity as Reading. We don't have a strong identity. And everybody seems to be saying the same thing. Um, it could be economic development, it could be connected to trail networks. We just have to figure out what that identity is that we want. Um, so I mean, you see other communities like Brownsville or Ludlow having more troubles with vacation rental by owner rules and things like that. Um, that may come our way here and we have to look at how the ordinances are going to protect us from things like that, but but right now we need an identity to know where, what direction we're heading and what we want to see as our what what we want to see Reading to be.
Sarah.
I'm intrigued by comments that every candidate has have made around this issue that you're summing up with this language about identity um in moving forward. And it's been one of the things that's been exciting to me as a forty-some-year Vermont resident and only a three-year resident of Reading. And it may be that it's not actually the planning commission that can be really doing the shaping and defining of that. But once it's shaped and defined, that can guide the planning commission on implementation. There is a a group of us in the community last June, just before the flooding, had been meeting and talking about um inviting the community to enter into um a community conversation experience. There are a couple of well-recognized, well-known models used in New England for conversations that help towns um in sort of a one-day, good, fun session be able to set some some new definitions about identity and direction that they want to have. And they're very open kinds of conversations. There's one particular model that I happen to have had some experience with and I've discovered that actually one of our elementary school teachers is a national expert in this model of community conversation and was willing to volunteer her time to help organize it and pull it together. And I'm kind of inspired by this conversation to say maybe some of us need to help invite people to do exactly what you've each been saying needs to be there and then the planning commission can take its existing count plan, the existing documents. You'll have a context in which to do this work. So it's maybe not something that the commission can do its itself, but could be guided by. So maybe there's there's two pieces to this.
I'm of the belief and one of the main reasons I'm on this committee and 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 have been spending time at the meetings is I think it should be the reverse. I think this committee should start that open conversation process. And immediately, my first meeting, I requested that there be more dialogue with people who are interested in the meetings and there could be a back and forth so we can move forward and create communication. And then, you know, if we can wipe out those barriers where it's not somebody else's fault, where a community or a small community, it's very achievable or should be. I mean, we're what, six hundred and sixty-nine residents in town? And we should be able to, which is extremely down from what it was before, um and declining from what I understand. So we should be able to gather our resources and do exactly what you're saying. Start off with this platform and then start outreach and you're right, getting people to invest in Keepers, the tavern, Watrobas, the greenhouse, start having community functions to where people feel a part of the conversation instead of isolated. I think it's great.
Wow. Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, would you Sarah, would you be willing to like email that to us or whatever, that model and that?
Give me a couple days.
Of course.
And I will, and and I will resurrect the conversation.
Thank you.
Um, and again, it's, and and fun, you know, it's
All my rules, this has got to be fun.
The Reading Energy Board would be interested in that as well.
Um, do any of the other candidates wish to speak anymore or any members from the public would like to ask something?
I I think they're all great and it's nice to see after two years very different ideas and uh different places from the community. Because before it was like one part of the community was speaking for everybody. And just hearing everybody with very different ideas, I probably won't agree with, you know, everybody. But it's nice getting a well-rounded um view of the town and I think you guys should rustle up one more and put them all on board.
Any other thoughts?
Let's start off with five.
Okay, let's start off with five is correct. And uh, could you go through the process again with what we're doing here in terms of the candidates we have to select?
So, I mean, we we have a couple options. Um, I think ideally, we would like to first of all, I would just say all of the candidates, you know, were just, it really was a, really was impressive and um, all of you are bringing various different time and talent and treasure to to what we're trying to do. Um, and I think really we have a lot of important work that we need to get started and we need to uh step up our game. So with that said, I think we would like to make a nomination to the select board next uh week. Um, so hopefully there's some sort of appointment and we can hit the ground running come our February meeting. So, um in the spirit of transparency, do we want to have a discussion among us right now and say if we have any sort of leanings in terms of any of the candidates and um make our recommendations or would we like to um uh, we didn't, we didn't make a change to the agenda in terms of going to executive decision, uh executive session or do we um we were made on this a little bit and?
I've heard, I've heard the word transparency uh cast cast around quite a bit, so I'm willing to step out and and say what I think.
Okay.
Uh, Holly, good to see you again after years, seems. And you mentioned early that uh, you know, I'm here, I know you love the community. And you said, if there's some- And you said, if there's somebody else who wants to step up, I'm perfectly happy. What I want. I want this community to come together. I've lived here all my life. I went to Redding Normal School, as we used to call it. And, uh, well, I could go into a, a lot of I, me, and stuff like that, but that doesn't matter. It's us. So I would like to see, uh, Jane, Erin, and Eve become members of the board. I would step back as an alternate member. And I would remain on the energy board and focus on energy issues, resiliency, and, uh, a number of other things. And in particular, I might want to join the fire department. Um, I would like to see us have a, a plan for every town-owned property. In particular, the fire and safety house and the lands around there whereby there's a group of people who can produce food for the food shelf and have, uh, living-in-place members, uh, have their food be their medicine, so to speak. Um, so that's what I'd like to see. Um, I've been on the board for thirty years and more. I want to thank previous members for their service and especially their tolerance in some cases. And, um, I'd like to give a shout out to Becky Bash when she was here, how well she composed many of the survey and survey results and town plans. Uh, Steve Straight, though I did not agree with, uh, uh, some of his policies and, uh, uh, direction. I mean, he was, you know, a, a glue to a lot of the direction of the town plan and zoning ordinance. So i- in that vein, I'm, uh, I'm saying that I would step back as an alternate member and, uh, see what the rest of the board thinks of that.
This is not where I thought we were going with this.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sure.
As I'm just sitting here as a resident, uh, uh, about Kevin's proposal, which is a great proposal, the only thing that concerns me when I think about that is that uh, if you step down, the person with the greatest seniority on the board would have fewer than six months of experience.
Well, that's why I would be attending meetings as an alternate.
Okay, so that's why I was going to ask what your participation would be, because I think, I think there's so much talent in this room and so much energy to do things. It's really exciting. But at the same time, we have people like you, we have people like Bob, who have so many years of history and knowledge about what's happened here. And I think it would be a shame to see that, uh,
Oh, I've seen that.
To see that go away. But sometimes, you know, issues will come up in front of the board, and you can say, actually, there is something about that, we looked at it ten years ago. And I think that having some sort of transition of knowledge
Right, right.
is really important.
Yeah.
And that's not to say that anyone's, anyone's expertise isn't fantastic, but it's the, it's more the history and the knowledge being transmitted to this board somehow that I'm worried about.
And that, it's a really good point, and it's one of the reasons why I requested that we change our monthly meeting dates to accommodate Bob's, Bob Allen's involvement in the meetings, so that he could, in the event we needed advice on structure and history, he could help us along with that. But I have to say, in my experience since July, anytime we wanted some historic answers from Steve or, or, um, well, really just Steve, we've been able to reach out and he's always been there to support us.
Yeah, well, that's great.
And I'm sure Kevin's not going anywhere, so I'm sure he would do the same.
I'm not going anywhere, how do you know?
Well, maybe, I don't know.
Kevin, I would also, I, I, Kevin, I think what you've said is very, you know, it's very honorable, and I think, you know, we would love to have you on the equation. I don't think that we're quite ready to make that transition, and maybe, maybe three, six months down the road, we will be able to, and that's what I'm thinking. And now we have a, but in terms of you properly resigning from the board.
Right, three to six months, yeah.
If that's what you choose.
I'm not, I'm not saying that I will not engage in town events, town policy, or the development of a, of a vision for a community that thrives economically, socially, and, uh, regionally. I don't think we do it by ourselves. We're all connected. The watershed systems go far beyond where the town of Redding is, and they start on various parts of the world. Uh, we're living on a water planet, and we have very little respect for living in a, a vapor, swimming into the water, and you know what else we do in the water? And that's one of the big problems in town. So, uh, I could get going. I probably should be at some, uh, event like Sarah mentions to, to say what I think rather than espouse, uh, my philosophies. Anywho, love you guys.
Yes.
Just a point of order. When we were talking about a seven-member board, I did a lot of research on the zoning laws within Vermont. And I don't remember which one, but it's either the planning commission or the ZBA, and I think it's the planning commission, cannot have an official alter.
Oh, you don't want me on the ZBA?
That's not, that's not. You said that before. It's the ZBA in terms of when there are hearings and when there are.
No, I, I have no reviews, so I would shut my mouth when it comes to ZBA shit.
I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, that a person can come to the meeting, they can help you out. Anybody can come to that meeting and help you out. But as far as making an official appointment, there's one or the other that is not allowed. That's all. I'd have to go back and find my notes.
Yeah, well, if I'm not an alternate, I'll just be a chair warmer then.
Well, I, I've got no problem with what you want to do, Kevin. I'm just saying, don't bring in a slight board if you can't do it anyway.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So Holly, are you a candidate? Are you officially a candidate?
I think Kevin said it very nicely. I said, I originally came here because I saw that you needed help. Um, but if there were other candidates that were willing to do it, I'm perfectly happy to help in other ways. I'd love to plan a forum, and where we, I mean, I, I'd help in other ways, so. I, I don't need to be on the board.
I'd like a lot of ways to do it.
So, I'm wondering if maybe, Kevin, this is something that we can perhaps continue the conversation, but I would ask for you to stay on the board, and I'm happy to go first, but I, I think we ought to make recommendations for two, the two open, uh, uh, members that will be in 2025, that will expire for 2025, that term. So it's going to be, you know, a little over a year.
Well, I don't want to lose this, this generated, uh, feeling of, uh, you know, growth in the town by, uh, you know, I would be able, Mark, to come and give my two cents forever, what it's worth. Um, and, uh, these very intelligent people could hit the ground running.
So what are you saying, Kevin?
I'd stay at meetings until like June or July of 2024.
So you will not resign?
So you will not resign, and we're, so, so let's, it's good that we now all publicly know your intentions. So why don't we, why, if, this is, this is something that we should, you know, we can plan ahead. I think we need to nominate the two openings that we currently have, knowing that the people that are in this room, if perhaps you were not nominated tonight, that there is going to be another opportunity down the turnpike to join the member, join the, the members.
Nominate another member?
But I, I, I don't think that we're, I mean.
You don't think I'm ready to call it quits?
I think you might be, but I don't think that, I don't think that we're in that, we're in that position right now. And I don't know, I, I actually, just logistically, from the, the legal standpoint, I don't know how you, how you nominate, how you nominate somebody to just replace you.
You can't, you would resign.
I get your point, Mark. Okay.
And then we're on to, we're down to two.
Bob has a, a comment.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, my perspective, and I'm not talking as a supplement or the zoning commissioner, but from my perspective, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, Mark, uh, a hundred percent. I don't think you want to go from a, from a five-member board to a two-member board at point three. And I have no problem with any of the ones that have spoken here today. Uh, I worked with Holly a lot, and she's self-officer, I know her very well. Uh, I know these other ladies some, uh, but not as well as Holly. But I think you, I think you keep your three-member board and build on it. Some point in time when you really want to make a change, Kevin, and make the change.
Well.
Uh, and I, I would also just suggest that maybe you have an executive session to air out some of the questions that you've got and go from there.
I'm not going in an executive session. You guys can go in. I'm, I'm keeping this clear and viewable to most anybody that wants to understand.
You can't make any decisions in there, but you can have a conversation.
I, I, I agree with Kevin. I think this should be followed.
Yeah, I mean, communication, the currency of, currency of democracy, Jane, write that down.
Okay, um, so if we're going to move forward with some of our nominations, um, I, um, I guess I'll, I'll start. We, we only have, we only have two, two spots. So we really can only each nominate two names.
Okay, let's do two.
So I will, I will record and then we'll make, make sense of that. Um, like I said, I'm really impressed with, with everybody, and it looks like there's more opportunities down the turnpike. Um, both formally on the board and, you know, in terms of some sort of civic organization, um, in terms of revitalization of this town.
Hang on there. I'm, uh, I didn't finish. If you're going to say two, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that Eve and Jane, uh, be the two candidates.
Okay.
I think they, uh, have, uh, a good summary of what needs to be done.
Okay.
And then, there may be even more people who want to engage publicly.
Okay. Stacy, are you ready to make your decision, or do you want me to?
Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, I too also will vote for, um, the nomination Eve and Jane. I think they're, um, they've been adding, um, uh, some, some, some things that we need in, on, on this board, both in terms of technical support and, uh, in terms of Jane, the real boots-on-the-ground experience. You've been doing this for two years, and, um, it's how Jean Goldsboro got her start, and, uh, I think I, I too would nominate Eve and Jane.
And I would recommend Eve and Holly.
Well, 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 well. I think the votes are counted.
Okay, so, um, do we have a motion to nominate Eve Waterfall and Jane, Jane Karch, um, to uh, the select board?
Recommending them.
Recommending them to the select board for ultimate appointment.
I will make that motion to recommend these, uh, likely candidates. Because the select board will say yay or nay.
So all, so all in favor?
You need a second.
Sorry, a second.
No, we don't need a second. In a three-member board, we don't need a second. It's majority rules.
So all agree?
Yeah, well, that's the story, Jane.
Kevin and Mark, we voted for Eve and Jane.
It was a vote, so.
So that's.
So you, I have to write I and nay.
I recommend Eve and Holly.
That was Stacy. So you can publish the vote, but we've, 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 by, by, by the majority rule, this is what the, the, the planning commission members have, have decided.
And, and I remain as a, as a member, Jane.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and thank you for all for participating, and we look forward to seeing you both at the meeting and, uh, perhaps, uh, uh, in community events and on the board later down. So thank you, thank you very much, and uh, congratulations, um, Eve and Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward.
What's next on the agenda?
The next on the agenda is to plan for February's meeting, Monday, February 5th, 2024. Um, and to also discuss, I got an email from Patrick from Okemo Valley TV, and we can, uh, get some input, but, um, we're back into the, into the issue, um, again, of using the town's account, and you have to authenticate. And Calista is not always available for that information, so they're suggesting that they will use their account to record the, um, to record the meeting, which they already do take that file and finesse it, and then send it to Calista for uploading. So, um, is there any discussion on this?
The next meeting and the procedure for the next meeting. I will not be able to open any meeting doors or help with any technical stuff, so will you be doing that?
Uh, I can step up and do that for February.
I think we, several months ago, we designated Mark as the February person.
Okay.
Well, I thought it was March, but, okay.
Oh, you were March?
I believe it was March, but we've lost two members, so I'm happy to do February.
Merci beaucoup.
So our, our.
And then, I think for discussion, um, we had talked about changing the day of the meeting. Since Bob is here, do we want to work on that to move it to?
Well, did Bob ask if he could change his meeting from the other meeting, so he could do this meeting? No?
I, I just wanted to say, you've got two new members coming on. And I think the five of you,
That's what I said.
Whoever your recording secretary is going to become, should figure out what is the best night for the five or six of you.
Right.
Not Bob Allen. Now, can I make every single meeting if you change it to a Tuesday? Probably not. Can I make every single meeting if you keep it on Monday? No. But I think that what you need to do is make sure that the five or six of you can make almost every single meeting, and if there is an issue that you know about in advance, get ahold of me and say, hey, Bob, we really would like to talk to you, or whatever, and then I will, as Kevin said, try to make some other arrangements. But I, as far as attending every single meeting, it probably won't happen no matter what night of the meeting it is. But five of you, six of you, whenever you hire a new recording secretary, should be the ones to say, this is the night, it's the best for us.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, I, 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 I agree. We're also going to have to look at some of the other partners, Okemo Valley TV, Mortha, all of these people, we're going to have to also discuss in terms of, um, changing it, but, um, uh, it's something that never discussed, but it's been for years. I'm, I'm assuming both Jane and Eve, you can, you know, whether it's on Zoom or whether it's in person, you're able to attend a monthly meeting on the first Monday of the month. Barring no, you know, unique extenuating circumstances.
The first Monday of the month.
First Monday of the month.
Is that what it is now?
That's what it is now.
Yeah, whatever it is now, I can do that.
Okay.
I can't do the second Monday, the first Monday of the month.
Okay, so we'll have that, we'll have that conversation later on, but in terms of now, let's, let's leave it as is. Um, is there any other business? Hmm, not for me. You brought up something earlier, but you not, you, do you not want to discuss, uh, public comment, or shall we wait for the full board to discuss that?
Well, I thought I, I sort of briefed that earlier, um, but yeah, we can, we can hone in on it. Um, I do believe we should approve public comment on topic throughout our meeting to create some sort of interaction, more interaction, more communication. And then it's up to the chair to moderate that and make sure that it doesn't get out of hand and.
Yeah, I think, I think with the new board, that, we, we discussed that, you know, there are opportunities for public comment, as long as it's to the. there are opportunities for public comment as long as it's to the point, on the point, destructive.
The topic.
And there is the opportunity always for public comment at the end for perhaps more um, development.
Interact with it, yeah. Thanks, Sarah.
Uh, and agenda sequence that I have seen with, with some other um, public municipal level meetings has been to have public comment first, which then allows people to identify if there is an issue on the agenda that they would wish to add comment to, which then allows the committee or board to determine if they will then um, entertain conversation from that person at the time that that agenda item comes up. So rather than putting it at the end of the meeting, having it at the beginning can be a protocol that still allows you to keep full management of the meeting but signals if there is a community interested in a particular topic.
You could put it on the website too. You could put your comments on the website. Please come this, uh, come this way on, you know, this topic, please.
Getting information out in more than one place. So the website is great if people know that it's there. And I think the front porch form has been working really well to say, hey, we have a new website now. Go here and look and you'll find the agenda posted and, you know, so getting it out in more than one place.
Exactly.
And I think having it in both, both ends, I, I propose this in July and August, um, to have it initially have a public comment section and then at the end. And then if we do the, per topic throughout the meeting, then I get, I think it gives ample opportunity for everyone interested to, to interact. But that, that's all.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
Here, you can have this.
Um, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.